Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, folks from Broadwater County. I want to make a real pretty personal comment. I'm proud of you guys for taking the time out of your day to come down here to understand what's going on in the county and to make sure that we move forward. And I understand and appreciate you guys, the service you give. I mean, it's a tough job and I appreciate, truly do. With that said, this afternoon, we reserved this section of the agenda for the commission to just kind of make sure that we've covered some of the things that the citizens are asking, if not certainly directly, probably in a more bigger picture of what is going on in Broadwater County and, most importantly, how we can move forward. And that's the key word, move forward. So, one of the most important tools that the citizens of Broadwater County have to understand what's going on in Broadwater County is the recording of the minutes and the recording of the meetings as they happen and what happens at these minutes or these meetings. Respectfully requested that, you know, the minutes from last week not be moved forward right away because those meet, that meeting and those minutes are a prime example that I think it's important for the citizens to have an opportunity to take a look at what took place last week and in relation to those minutes and how, certainly, it's an important part of the process. Now, don't get me wrong, I heard you loud and clear this morning, Commissioner Robert, and I'm not here to amend those minutes. It's as you stated clearly that the citizens don't have that seat at the table to do so. But what I do want to point out is last week, on Monday, we had on the agenda, the citizens, the Concerned Citizens Coalition were on the agenda last week at 1:30. We spent a substantial amount of time going over and reviewing some of the points of concern that the citizens have. The discussions were held at that meeting and I have a copy of the draft minutes that are being presented for approval and there is no mention of the meeting at 1:30 last week. There's no mention whatsoever of that meeting even taking place. This is an absolute problem for the people of Montana, the people of Broadwater County, to understand what is going on with our local government if the minutes don't accurately reflect what's going on. I have taken the opportunity to go through my recording, which I do each week, and I pulled that 1:30 excerpt just for a sample to show the commission and to make sure that the folks of Broadwater County have this information available that may not have made that meeting. I'm not going to read this to you because it'll take up more than my 15 minutes, a lot of time, but I would like to take with the, with the okay from the chair to read two small sections out of that recording just because I think it fits perfectly to where we wanted to continue this discussion today. Again, this is, it's not an exact, I won't call it a translation or a transcribed edition of those minutes, but because I, I took the liberty to clean up some of the ums and the ahs and silence portions, just to make it so it's readable, but I will stand on the fact that it is an accurate reflection of the minute and the discussions held. I'd like to just take a couple of sections here and this is a statement that I made at last week's meeting on behalf of the citizens. Moving forward, we now learn that we have Lewis and Clark County coming in to assist us in our financial matters pending the outcome of everything. I think it is important to recognize, to our knowledge, there never was a quorum making those decisions. It was an arbitrary decision made on behalf of the county by you, Commissioner Robert, as acting chair of the commission. To our knowledge, Commissioner Slifka has never been included in any of these discussions, which constitute a problem here. He is our elected official as well and has been left out of the loop. I think it is important to point out, Madam Chair, that this is absolutely in contradiction of any open and fair meeting process that the people expect here in Broadwater County. Again, I cleaned that up a little bit, got rid of a couple of my ums, but that reflects what was stated at that. Another section that I wanted to point out, we had two different things on the agenda, which I'll get into here in a minute, and they were hearings that were held on last Monday. One of them was on a rural improvement district for the road policy and creating that policy process. One of the constituents, citizens, raised a question about DEQ. Madam Chair, you mistakenly reflected that comment to tie back into DES and made some comments there. And then I come in afterwards and I will quote here, "Not to confuse DEQ with DES, I am on the subject of DES," which is for anybody that doesn't understand the acronyms, Department of Emergency Service. I would like to go straight up and ask to go back to the decisions made recently. Really, in this issue, we got going on Broadwater County and a lot of these, and a lot of these resolve around Title II, certainly discussed heavily and specifically around 2DSS 136, as in regarding to this body. So, what I want to know from you, if I can answer this from this Madam Chair, is under what statute and/or authority has taken place, taken precedence, I'm sorry, over a normal process to afford the arbitrary decision-making process left in the hands of yourself rather than the following quorum of public process? Well, not necessarily in the public, but allowing for at least the seats to be filled by fellow commissioners as they equally have a chair at that table. The chair of the commission is a job to direct meetings, not to take control. So please explain to the people, under what authority you can continue making these decisions, leaving out Commissioner Slifka specifically. Again, this question was asked multiple times through the meeting. We talked about MCA, we never did identify that, any specific Montana laws that we're working with. We just, we kind of, just never got to that point. Backing up a little bit, last week's meeting, excuse me, last week's meeting had two hearings. One of them, again, as I mentioned, was on a road, rural improvement district, a road improvement district, creating that process, through a process of having a policy adopted. I have never, in my entire process of attending any of these meetings, where a hearing, as formally designated as a hearing, the people didn't have their opportunity to have their pros and cons recorded in that hearing process. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but the minutes do not even reflect that a hearing was held on either matter. There's slight mention in passing of comments made and decisions will be moved forward to another meeting, but there was, the folks that raised concerns and/or comments, whether they were pro or con, are not recorded in those minutes. It's important for the people to have that accurate record because when you hold a hearing as required to move forward on processes, that's what the formal process is for, to record those citizens' input. I'm going to turn this in. I had this notarized for your convenience. I'd like to have this, I would love to have it part of the minutes. I would love to have it recorded part of the minutes as you adopt those minutes. If you don't feel that that's in your purview, Madam Chair, then I would, at the very minimum, at least to have those recorded on file for those folks that were not here can understand some of the discussions that are being held because it is absolutely part of the record. I think that also, before I move on from last week's meeting, that because there is no recording of anything to do with hearings, which is a formal process, in the minutes, I think it's important that both Commissioner Slifka and yourself, Madam Chair, maybe back up the bus a little bit and take care of those important details before adopting these minutes as final. We have to at least acknowledge that folks showed up for a hearing and record their concerns and/or endorsement of an issue. So, I would, I would really like to see, excuse me, see you take that extra effort, again, in the light of everything that's been going on. I think it's only prudent on behalf of the citizens to do things right instead of continuing down the same road. Multiple times before this body and in writing, I have asked for questions to be answered. Not necessarily questions tied to an investigation or a private person, no matter, but multiple times, I personally have asked for questions to be answered and still, on many of them, on behalf of the folks that I talk with and deal with, still waiting for those answers, Madam Chair. I think there's a list of six of them that were given, still waiting on that one. We have multiple citizens who've asked multiple questions and I think it could come courtesy that these folks be answered as well as these questions be addressed by this body. Speaking of questions, I'm going to throw these out here and I know what my answer's going to be, Madam Chair, and I think it's unacceptable, but I will move forward with the best I can. For the record, what was the reason? There's an alleged violation of open meeting laws concerning a decision to obtain services from Lewis and Clark County. Last week's meeting, repeatedly, we asked, under what open meeting process was that decision made? We have still yet to understand how that decision came about. Number two, at what public meeting did this board decide to obtain services from Lewis and Clark County? I attend all of these commission meetings. Well, I got us to backup. I missed the one at the south end on Tuesday night last week. But the meetings held here, I try to make all of them so I understand what's going on on behalf of fellow citizens. None of this was ever discussed in an open meeting process period and I would like to know, I think the people deserve to know, at what meeting did you decide you, I will say you as a body decide to obtain services from Lewis and Clark County? And let's have a date of that meeting. When did that meeting take place? And where did that meeting take place? And could you possibly provide the citizens of Broadwater County an agenda of that meeting? And could you please provide a copy of the minutes of that meeting? Again, let's come back to the bottom line. If we do not record what's happening here in Broadwater County, it's pretty hard to say that it even happened. And that works on all sides of the street. And so I think, Madam Chair, that will conclude my part. I wanted to make sure that if any of the citizens had any input on things as they're moving forward, I didn't burn up my whole 15 minutes, which I'm probably getting close to. Madam Chair, thank you for your time. Commissioner Slifka, thank you for your consideration and thank you, folks, for coming today.
All right, public comment, John.
Laura, will you answer his questions where we can understand what really happened? I asked this question earlier and I didn't get an answer. Will you answer it now?
This is public comment, so we are going to hear from the public. So, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? All right, seeing none.
No, I've got something else.
All right, more public comment then.
Well, this is more the comp, this is a survey.
Okay.
With our discussions in the past about Nellie B. Sayer's judgment, which you opened and lightly with malice and forethought, refused to perform your duly oath of office with outrageous attitude between you and Elaine. This is a document served on you from the United States Court of Appeals, Case 937021. And what you have done by not answering your summons, which the sheriff served on you, and not abiding by the movement forward to settle Nellie B. Sayer's case and judgment and warrant, this here is complete with judgments and it's been served on the sheriff's department, it's been served on the county attorney's office, and now it's being served on you. And I expect you to sit down, move out of your office until you've vindicated. And if you don't, then due process of the law will work. But here is your notice. You have been served.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none. Yes.
Comment on that stuff? I've got something different I told you.
You can comment on anything you like.
It's not really a comment, it's a question. I don't know if it's the right time. I've never been to one of these before, I'm sorry, but...
No, you're absolutely fine. This is the time to ask any questions.
This is about a stupid trailer house that I got out of Goose Bay.
Okay.
They told me to come down here from the licensing department. We went to move it and the guy that I bought it from hadn't paid the taxes or something on it and they told me, well, there's a tax issue, blah, blah, blah. But I called him, he said, oh, I'll take care of it. I took care of it, I just got my paperwork. He assured me everything was fine. Well, now the thing's sitting in Bozeman and Goughton Counties, trying, they're trying to, the people that have it are trying to get their stuff squared away. I come down here and there's a $1,300 tax bill against it. And now I can't, the guy's phone number doesn't work anymore, it don't work where he was supposed to, or what was working, I can't get ahold of him, basically. And I went to the county attorney, they said there's nothing they can do. Went to the Justice of the Peace, they said, no, nothing they can do. But I got to looking at this and they told me to come down here and talk to you guys to see if this can be, something can be done with it because he hasn't paid taxes since 2008 on this trailer house. And now I got a $2,500 trailer house with a $1,300 tax bill. So they, they don't know, they told me to come talk to you guys about it at the end of this meeting, so that's what I'm doing. And I guess my question is, how does somebody go from 2008 and not pay any taxes? And then it's not even against the law because they can't prosecute anything. I'm wondering if there's anything that can be done by this commission to either reduce this or do something because now I got this, these poor people can't get insurance on their place or nothing because they can't pay the taxes, you know, they can't afford $1,300. So, basically, it's going to leave a meat hole in the bag. I'm going to go pay it so I can get their taxes if I have to, but I, I'm guessing, they told me to come down here and talk to you guys about it, so that's what I'm doing.
So, you're moving it just to make sure?
I already moved it because I had to get it out of Goose Bay because they had a deadline at Goose Bay to get it out, so we went ahead and moved it.
Okay. They want to keep it?
Mm-hmm.
That the people who own it, who have the taxes owed, it's their trailer, they want to keep it? They sold it to someone else?
Sold it to me.
Oh, okay, and you want to use it?
I sold it to someone else.
Okay, all right.
And so now they're sitting there in Bozeman, we moved it to Bozeman, set it all up and everything, and they went, and then this guy assured me everything was fine and there was this big glitch, whatever. I had no idea it was $1,300. I mean, some of these I've had to pay the taxes on just because the way it worked out, the taxes came out late this year or something, I don't know. But anyway, I got stuck paying at least one year taxes on a lot of these so I could move them, you know?
Okay.
Which I didn't, you know, $150 bucks, whatever. But since 2008, this guy hasn't paid taxes and nobody's done anything about it and now I get stuck with the thing. I got the paperwork here, I don't know if you want to see it or not, but...
Yeah, yeah, I'm also going to call Doug, who is our recorder.
Yeah, he said if they had any questions, they'd come explain or whatever, you know.
If he falsely told you this, I would pay the money. I'd file a complaint against you.
Well, I tried. I went in with this gentleman here and he said there's no law room.
You can get a civil, you can get a civil judgment against him, but we can't prosecute that kind of case out of our office.
I'm wondering why anybody pays their taxes. It's been five years and nothing's happened to them.
Okay, is he at lunch?
Doug knows about it too.
Hello, Charles, this is Laura. Hey, we have a gentleman with a question on taxes, overdue taxes on a trailer. Is Doug still at lunch? Oh, excellent. Would you ask him to just come down so that we can hear from the expert on what, what we can do on this? All right, thanks a lot.
I wonder something to do with it, or just which way to go with it. There has to be. In fact, the county attorney's office should have informed you which way to go on it.
No. He told me to go to the Justice of the Peace, Justice of the Peace said, go get a lawyer. So I don't know why anybody would pay their taxes.
That's right.
Because not against the law, not to.
County taxes are involved, so that's why I think that. Don't you think the county attorney should be involved in this?
I can't speak to whether or not Ms. Bossy would get involved in a case like this. If the taxes that weren't paid were federal, then we definitely can't prosecute them out of the state office.
Or the county.
I don't know, it just seems awfully strange that I got no recourse, no matter what, and I get stuck with a $1,300 bill. These poor people, I can't, I mean, I'm going to get, I'll take care of it no matter what because I sold and delivered the house to them, you know. These are cheap houses, it was, they're old houses, but people are hurting and so, you know, it was a kind of blessing for a lot of people, these old houses, but, you know...
Actually, somewhere, I, I have no attorney, so I have no idea where to lead. But I was, I think the county attorney's office should be able to lead, start you in the right direction.
I think before going down on the end of the diving board and finding out swimming pool has no water, that what we should do is hear from the clerk and recorder, who's the expert on taxes. Get some facts, get some guidance from him, and then we can start directing you on what you can do and offer any help that we're able to do.
Well, he's basically...
And he's on his way.
Yeah, they came down, they told me that you guys have the power to either reduce or forgive that or something.
But since he bought it, the taxes are due and he's got the title, he's stuck with it, he's a counter for Jim's.
And he's, he's on his way.
Yeah.
Just from upstairs, so...
I just appreciate you listening to me because I mean, I...
And you can't get ahold of the attorney that you bought it.
Oh, no, his phone doesn't work no more and then I was working at the Shiloh Inn in Helena. He don't even work there anymore. I called there this morning and they, he's not there no more. Which probably wouldn't do me no good anyway, but my thing is I, I was used to paying the one year, you know, because the way they came out this year, I actually bought a lot of those houses before the taxes came out in order to move them, even though I didn't own the house that whole, I had to pay the $150 or $160 bucks, so what is good? And I like, whatever, I'll eat that, but I can't eat it. I mean, if I have to, I will, but I mean, I don't want to eat $1,300, you know?
Yeah.
And it just blows my mind that it could go from 2008 and nothing ever happened.
Again, don't understand how that can be in that guy's name and the county attorney cannot touch the case. What are we paying her for? Which county tax?
Well, she hasn't actually talked, no, she hasn't actually talked to me about it. I don't know what your position is there.
Hey, man, I'm a law student.
Oh, okay.
Like, I'm not a lawyer yet.
All right, well, that's, I haven't actually talked to her. She's not here today.
Yeah, this is...
So that's what I was told, though, so they, long story short, they directed me down to this meeting, so...
And as soon as we get Doug here, we'll get some answers for you. I think until then, as far as any speculation, I think that's just really not a smart thing to be doing on, on either our part or, you know, that of the public. We'll get answers here in just a second. Do you want to come up to the table? It's more, are you fine there?
Yeah. It's a personal thing, kind of, it's not really a...
Hot seat.
You got a tablet.
You're too late to go to the table, Mr. Cameron.
Didn't know it was burning too bad.
Hey, Doug. We need an expert.
Doug, don't get a hot seat.
This is paperwork.
Yeah, I printed this up for him.
Oh, okay, all right, I figured you've seen it, but I wanted to be sure.
Yeah.
What are, I guess the first question is, is what can we do to help? What are the details that got us here, got this gentleman here?
Well, it's one of the trailers from Goose Bay. My understanding is the gentleman that you bought it from was still living in it?
Mm-hmm.
And in 2008, he decided that he was going to quit paying his taxes because they were going to make him move his trailer anyway. So he was living in it for, it's like, five years, just didn't pay his taxes. Steve moved it, my understanding, because they had a deadline to move him and he moved There was, there was back taxes owed at the time he moved it. The taxes need to be paid before the, legally before the trailer's moved. So, my understanding is it's already sold to someone in Bozeman. And Steve came in today to see what he could do about these taxes, about getting them taken off the record. Normally, in a case like this, the purchaser is the one that holds the taxes if the homeowner won't pay for it.
Was anything done since '08? Are they doing taxes?
They did pay, they did pay one year, they paid, what year was it? 2009.
How come it wasn't pressured to make them pay or the county take it over or whatever? Because the procedure always is, I mean, how come that, just nothing was ever done?
No, mobile, mobile homes are dealt a little different than real estate than...
Are they?
No one really takes a tax lien out on a mobile home like they do on real estate. They just don't want them. And it's quite a, quite a procedure to...
I guess another question, how many of these we got scattered around the county like this? Have we got a bunch of them around the county that...
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure we do. But we started once, I know when, when Ben was still under sheriff, we started once. You have to go out and the trailers, all the ones with delinquent taxes have to be stickered.
I remember seeing them years ago like that.
Basically, means the people living in them have to move out. And we started that process and got about halfway through it and I'm not sure exactly what broke down on the, I don't know if it was election coming up and that superseded the process of doing it. It was, it was back when Judy was the treasurer. It was when they started that process.
I just wonder how much money the county's got, something out there. You know, if this is $1,300, that's just one trailer, one spot. I mean, I don't know what we got around the county, but it could be substantial.
Could be. But what's the incentive to pay?
Well, if they're going to be moved out of it.
Oh, yeah, if they are, but obviously...
This and evidently, nothing was done on this at all. But once they're stickered like that, and I, again, I don't know the law and all that, I just remember some of those things taking place, they have to pay or get out of it, don't they?
Right, yeah. And then it's...
At a certain time.
Goes into more or less a tax sale situation where, where it can be sold.
Further. It'd be sold for taxes owed.
Yeah.
That's all the county would care about, to get their taxes.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't know how we help the other, do the channels, but...
Well, I think the issue is that this was started years ago and for some reason, it wasn't finished. Moving ahead to the future, certainly this is something that we can look at addressing. That isn't your issue. Your issue is this one trailer with this $1,300 bill attached to it. You can't find the old owners and either you or the new owners who didn't know about this bill are going to get stuck with it, right?
Yeah, the new owners, they're not going to pay it, they couldn't anyway, I don't think. So I'm wondering if there's a way to, you know, sell, settle it, less than $1,300 would be nice, you know? I mean, they said that they come to you and you're the only ones that, right, that can forgive these things or do these kind of things? The commissioners who...
Yeah, they, actually, the treasurer on a mobile home in certain cases can forgive the last five years of taxes normally if the mobile home is uninhabitable.
Okay.
Or, you know, trash or used for storage or something like that, and I didn't feel that was the case on this one.
Okay.
No, it's livable.
It's livable, the guy was living in it for all five years, just didn't pay his taxes. My understanding was that you had contact with the old owner.
Yeah, not to the amount, though, I had no idea. I mean, all I knew is Lisa came down to get a permit.
And I was understood that you needed taxes for delinquents and that's why it waited so long to move it.
I knew there was taxes on it, but he said they were taken care of and he was getting the paperwork. But nobody said nothing about no five years. I could say, I've been doing this, I've been trying to get them to pay their taxes, you know? Because obviously, I don't want to pay them, but I don't have to pay somebody else's taxes. But no idea, it was from 2008, you know, I've been, I've paid how many, you've been up there, I've been paying a lot, I've been paying a lot of taxes, I mean, a lot of taxes on trailer houses I didn't live in, you know? But I had no idea, I had one that was $1,300. But I had no idea, I had one that was thirteen hundred dollars, you know?
So...
The, the penalty on interest on this one was two hundred and thirty-four, the actual taxes were a hundred, or one thousand eighty-three, thirty-five.
And that's how we get to the thirteen, is just by adding those two, the finance, the charges, late charges in the total? What were the taxes, Doug, there for the last year, two thousand thirteen?
Two thousand thirteen, two hundred thirty-five, twenty...
Just, this is just a shot in the dark, and it's just a place to start a discussion. But, uh, what if, um, based on the situation with Goose Bay, and all the related issues that, first of all, the commission were to, uh, discuss and vote, and of course, this would have to be on next week's agenda in order to do this, but to waive the finance charges. Um, and then for, um, the county to pay those first four years that should have been covered, um, that weren't. Um, and then, we, that would leave us with two thousand thirteen, which is the last year, uh, which you should have been advised of.
Yeah, I knew, I've been paying those.
Okay.
So that doesn't bother me at all.
Um, and then maybe, uh, along with this, part B would be not your issue, but our issue of targeting who is delinquent in trailers and pursuing to make sure that everyone's paying their fair share. Because everybody's receiving the services, everybody should be paying into the pot. What do you think about that as a starting point?
That's what I said a while ago, yeah. On this here part, yeah, I, I'd like to proceed a little more, try to get this guy to pay him. It's probably, like some of these other things we run into, probably won't happen, but we should give it a try. And definitely, that it, and that, we can work something out as far as that part, because, oh, see you being stuck.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
But in the future, in fact, we should start, I'd say, almost immediately, getting on these other ones throughout the county. You get the list, and, and the delinquent list, and how long and stuff, and, uh, whatever procedure it takes, if we have to go through the county attorney's office or just through the sheriff's office, we'll get, I think we should get going on that.
I know, the last time we did it, and it's been, like I said, Judy was in office, so it's been at least six years, so my memory is a little fuzzy on that, but, uh... If, if my memory serves me, there were, um, registered letters mailed out to them. And then one of the, one of the officers and, and Ben was the one that kinda...
Was doing the show.
Did all that, we just went to one officer, Ben just agreed to do it all, and he had to go out and I believe he had to serve each and every one of them. Um, to let them know they were delinquent, and they had so long to pay, if they didn't pay within that amount of time, there was a orange sticker that was...
I remember there were stickers, seeing them on trailers.
Yeah. And I think that gave them, I'm not sure how much time, forty hours, I'm not sure.
So, um, does that sound, does that sound for you?
That's fine with me, I'll, I'll call them and let them know what's going on, and so, I appreciate it, that'd be, that'd be great, you know, definitely better than thirteen hundred.
Sure, yeah, and of course, it's not, it's not...
Right, I know, I bet, yeah.
But Doug, does that sound like an okay, um, remedy for this situation, or do you have any other thoughts to throw on the table?
No, I don't, this pharmacist, I think his name was, um, I don't think we're gonna get any money from him.
He's got nothing to lose, he's got no teeth.
My thoughts is it should be paid by the people in Bozeman that are, that are ending up with the trailer online. But, you know, if they're, if they're not gonna pay, and Steve's done a lot of work out there getting these trailers out, I'm not sure what the profit margin is there, but...
Twenty-five hundred dollar trailer, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be the, the problem we're running into when we start stickering these trailers, we're probably gonna find a lot of people losing their homes, um, for trailers that are gonna end up like the East Bay, costing the county to get rid of, which, you know, that's neither here nor there, it's just gonna be one of the fallouts of the, of the whole process, that is... That's why people don't do tax liens on mobile homes, most of them aren't really what people want to, to purchase there. It's just a place to be at night.
I, I just a thought, maybe on some of the ones that are way behind, you should maybe do a three-year deal, saying, you know, we're gonna go back at least three years. You guys need to catch up, I mean, I don't know, just throwing it out there.
I suppose the circumstances, you know, but...
Yeah, the county has a partial payment program that you can do on mobile homes, anybody that has a mobile home can come in and say, "I can afford twenty-five dollars a month," and start paying, and that...
Something like that.
You know, we have that in progress already, and people sign up for that and pay for three months and quit paying, so it's, you know, it's...
You have something to say?
Um, is this pertinent to this discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Just real quick, I, you know, I, I understand as a working man and what Steve's doing out there, kinda got between a rock and a hard spot with the deadlines and everything. I, I am concerned on behalf of the county, if we make sure that we look at this from the legal point of view, making sure that we don't set precedence of just, um, going forward and waiving, um, taxes on, on the county outside of the provision that's there, where, for example, I took an old trailer, um, declared it the junk process, and, and got those taxes waived, which is provided for on statute. And because this is a livable trailer, um, I, I would caution that we make sure that we look into the legal, legal aspect of, of waiving those taxes on, on a livable home, uh, before doing so.
Thank you, Steve, do you have any comments to that?
No, just consider, I mean, just, like I say, I came in with the one issue, I didn't mean to open up a whole can of worms, but, um, that's what I was, I was told to do, I, I went, I've been in the building this morning trying to figure out something, because I was pretty sticker shocked, you know, and I, and I know people in Bozeman. I didn't, I'm not kinda, I was gonna sell them something, and surprise them with a thirteen hundred dollar bill, I'll just eat it if I have to, but obviously, I would prefer not to.
I think this situation does not necessarily set a precedent county-wide. This situation has pieces to it that are completely and totally unique to this particular situation. Goose Bay is under a court order to get those out of there. Somebody needs to do that, if it's not you, at some point, there's not gonna be anybody but the county to do that. Now we're contracting and paying somebody to do what you're doing essentially. You know, certainly to make something for yourself, but you're not costing the taxpayers anything there.
Actually, I, I paid a lot of money, I paid a lot of money in dumpster fees out there.
Bet you have, yes. No, I, I, this in no way sets a precedent for something to be followed, this is a, this is a different, unique situation. And, and I think, you know, trying to work with, is this the right thing to do on behalf of citizens?
Alright, appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, if you would, do you have Steve's phone number?
I don't.
We should make sure we have that, um, which on the agenda, you don't necessarily have to come in for that, we can certainly call you afterwards.
Okay.
Um, on what was done.
Next Tuesday, I'm moving one, so I'll come over here.
Okay, uh, but if you would, make sure we get your phone number before you get too far.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, you bet. And, um, certainly, if you have any thoughts during this week before, you know, this comes up for an official discussion.
Touchy issue, it really is, and, you know, it's, uh...
And, and this...
I'm glad it's moving out of Broadwater County. It's just every trailer we get out of Broadwater County just takes a little bit of the... You know, and there are, there are people, I'm one of them, I live in a, in a mobile home, and my taxes are paid every year, and, and it's not a problem, but that, that is one of the biggest tax problems we have is with mobile homes, they just people move in and out, in and out, and, and a lot of them are rentals, and, and it's a homeless option to buy, or like, like this, or just you know, people don't look at them as real property, a lot of people, they, they're just motel six, you stay in for six months and you're gone, and and really don't care what happens from there on, so, yeah, if we can resolve this one, I think like you said, it's, this is a, it's got a lot of a lot of issues that are specific to this one. The other ones probably not so much, but they're, they're hard to track, especially since the, the titles for a mobile home since, if they're older than a seventy-six, the state won't even reprint a title anymore for them. So they're sold with the bill of sale. Well, if I own a mobile home and sell it to Steve and give him a bill of sale, and he doesn't take the mobile home to the assessor's office to get that transferred into his name, and it saves in my name.
Oh.
And so, yeah, there, there is...
And the, the catch, the catch of it, the way they're trying, and it, the whole idea behind getting the permit and is, so this stuff does get taken care of before it even gets moved. But in this, and I, that's what we try to do, is get all these permits, but I know about a lot of permits here in the last month. This one here, like I said, had to go, and he kept telling me he was gonna give you the paperwork squared up, and finally came to the, "I'm just gonna take it, and if I get caught, it's a hundred and eighty-dollar fine, you know, if you get caught moving it without having this permit." But, um, that's the whole idea behind the permitting.
Right.
These guys hate doing these permits, I mean, they're a pain in the butt.
They're the, they're, they're the most time-consuming thing on the motor vehicle side of my office, is to do a permit at all, that's in the end right now, then there's two different computers that you have to work on in order to get it done. You take the copy of the permit, give the customer one, we keep one, we give one to the Broadwater County Assessor, and we send one to the treasurer in, or whatever county they're moving, if they're moving to another county. So, it's very time-consuming there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not our favorite thing to do, but
No.
Something that has to be done.
But with that explanation, that kinda makes sense, or it explains how trailers kinda fall under the, under the radar. Um, Steve, I'm wondering if next Monday, if we do put a time to address this, if, if you would be able to come in, and just please just, just in case.
Yeah, I'll, definitely, I'll try to, I mean, yeah, I, I gotta head out Monday night to go get one drink, but, but yeah, I, I, I'll try to, yeah, if you give me the time.
What, two o'clock, next Monday?
That'd be, I'll, yeah, I'll do my best.
Okay, alright, and, um...
I'm spread thin these days, Lord.
I bet you are, yeah, and I'm sorry to ask you that, I just think it might be really wise to have you here in case there's
Okay, that's fine.
Argument, and...
No, that's...
And again, get your phone number from Doug.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much, I take my time.
You bet, you bet. Thanks very much. And we do have a comment from the panel from Cheryl.
Doug, Doug, just, just a sec. On, on the county's part, in the county forgiving, in essence, that's what it would be, a thousand dollars worth of taxes. Doesn't that necessitate a ten ninety-nine, because that's a gift to, to the, the delinquent taxpayer?
No, it doesn't, doesn't necessitate a ten ninety-nine, but, what we're doing is we're writing off the taxes, we're not, uh...
Well, I know, but that, that...
We're not actually gifting them anything, we're...
Well, yeah, you are.
We're forgiving a bill that hasn't been paid. Have you ever gotten a ten ninety-nine for a bill you didn't pay?
Well, when I worked on the mortgage, in this brief week, we're closed on you, and you owed it, and we sold that property for, if, say you owed us a hundred and twenty grand, we sold it for a hundred and sixteen grand. It's four thousand dollars that you owed us that we didn't get, that we had no prayer. You got a ten ninety-nine for four grand.
I've never seen a ten ninety-nine given off for one of these. That's legal, I think.
Thanks, Doug.
Alright.
Any other public comment? Any others? Tim?
We've been working on one other aspect of, of ongoing, trying to move forward, and with all due respect, if you could have a slot next week in the afternoon.
You are down for, uh, one thirty.
Oh, already got me down for next week?
You wanted, for the preservation act, it's just...
Okay, could we do a kind of a back-to-back on that? Um, for concerned citizens?
Sure, another fifteen minutes?
Uh, I, I think fifteen minutes would be fine.
Okay, uh, we'll put you down at two fifteen.
Okay.
For fifteen.
Thank you, ma'am.
You bet, and so you want that just to say concerned citizens of Broadwater County again?
The, the same, same as what was today, ma'am.
Alright, any other, um, public comment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Franklin, was you gonna discuss this, now that the, the minutes deal is over with?
Yeah, you wanna go into discussion on that, or?
On the minutes?
On the minutes?
Uh, if you wanna go ahead and make a motion, I think it'd be appropriate.
Motion, just, uh, I said that from when I first come in here, I always wanted the more detailed, better minutes than what there had been through the years. And, uh, and they've improved quite a little bit, I know, an example, there are wild actors. Well, there was a lot of different comments, different things in there, so from what the minutes were, I had the others transcribed out, and there was about eight pages. We don't need that each time, but I believe you're right, where you said that, uh, like those hearings, things like that. When people have, uh, these concerns, they should be in the minutes. So, I don't, I don't, or motion for that, but that's
How about for the...
Or common sense, I guess, in anything.
How about for last week's minutes, are you gonna make a motion to approve those, or do you want to table them?
Well, if we're gonna go back, unless we might as well table them and get those hearings and that stuff listed in there too, then...
Okay, let the record show that Commissioner Sylifko would like to table approval of the minutes. Alright, any other public comment? Alright, meeting adjourned.
Well, I, back to your thing on your trailer. Not unique. I sold a trailer. The real estate agent, the person that bought it, never registered the title. A year later, I'm getting a tax statement. They're difficult to clear up. It's not unique here.
Darn it.
And we didn't move the trailer.
Yeah, it sounds like there's quite a quagmire, just from what Doug said about it.
There is.
Yeah. Alright, last call for public comment. Alright, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.